Oh, I can't do better than the introduction that was given during public comment, I don't think. But we are very, very fortunate. I think I said that when we hired Monica Crowley for this position. For this position that no one knew exactly what it was going to be or who it was going to be with. There's a principalship for you, right? And I am just more convinced every day that we couldn't have hired a better person for this role. As the population that would be at this school has come more into focus, Monica has been able to refine what she's been looking to do. But she's, she, along with Jennifer Fisher-Mueller, have bought into the mantra on this particular experience of making sure that it was a very, very special experience for our students. Making sure that staff were involved in that, in planning that experience, making sure parents were involved in planning that experience. And to date, as we're closing in on the opening of this particular school in September, Monica's done a marvelous job of really, and you'll see this tonight and hear about it over the coming months. People are very, very excited about the experience that she has led the generation up here. So without any other comments, I'm just going to turn this over to Monica Crowley, who will walk you through where we are, where she is in terms of plans for, what do we call it? Devotion at, what do we call it? Devotion at OLS, got it. Something, today we're calling it Devotion at OLS, right.
Exactly.
Monica.
Thank you very much, and good evening, and thank you everyone for coming. I want to thank you for having me here tonight. I would like to take a moment to thank your support of me and confidence in me to be the principal of Devotion at the Old Lincoln School. Now that we officially know who is going to occupy the school, we can move forward, which is very exciting. I would also like to acknowledge Dr. Lupini and the deputy superintendents, along with central staff, my fellow principals, other Brookline educators, students, and families for all their support. I was recently asked by a colleague, "Are you having fun?" And I said, "I'm having a lot of fun. It's challenging, but it's been wonderful." And I think the reason it's been so much fun and so wonderful is that everybody that I come in contact with, everybody that I interact with, has been incredibly supportive. And it's really wonderful to be in a position where everybody wants your goal to succeed. And that's a great place to be, so that's where I feel I am. I also, in particular, want to thank Rick Rogers, who is the principal of the Lawrence School. He was my mentor for six years while I was the VP there, and he continues to support me in my new role and share his expertise whenever I ask him, which is often. For that, I am very grateful. It was that experience that helped me prepare for my current role as principal. So that's why I'm here tonight, and I am using Aprezi, which is a software presentation in the spirit of the technology piece of 21st century learning as a way of being a producer and not just a consumer of the Internet. So I'm trying to mimic what we're going to ask our students to do. I will be sharing information about relationship building, communication, the guiding principles at the Old Lincoln School, renovation updates, and you'll hear a little bit of student voice and teacher voice as well. So here we go. And that's not where I want to be. Let's try that again. Okay, so like I mentioned, the number one priority for me in any successful organization is the relationships that you build with the people within that organization. Positive and negative relationships can greatly shape the climate and culture of a school, as you all know. So it's really important that we have a positive culture in order to achieve the greatest student learning that we can. All members of our community, all members of our community will need to work as a team to make sure that every student gets the attention and learning opportunities that he and she deserves. Therefore, I have made relationship building and communication with parents, staff, and students a priority since I was hired. What I've started to do since I was hired is I have been meeting with the Devotion parent community since last spring. And the reason I started to meet with them first because we knew for sure that they were going to come to the Old Lincoln School. At that point, we weren't sure yet who else was going to come. So I have been meeting with them at the parent coffees. I have also been attending the Devotion School Council once a month. And I have also, I have also been attending the Devotion building meetings at Town Hall. I've created a link on the Devotion PTO website as a way of communicating with parents, updates about the transition. So I've been trying really hard to learn who the parents are and learn what their hopes, wishes, and dreams are for the new Devotion School at the Old Lincoln School. With regards to staff outreach, when I learned that I was going to be the principal last spring, I sent a general email to all Brookline educators because I wanted to hear from everybody in the town as to how they felt was the best way to move forward with the new transition middle school. So I met with teachers from Baker, I met with teachers from Pierce, I met with teachers from Lawrence, I met with teachers from Devotion, to try to get a sense of what they hoped this transition middle school would be like. And once I learned that it was going to be more the Devotion School, I've been meeting with the Devotion 6-8 staff since, well, I met with them last spring, but I have been meeting with them at least once a month this year. And that's been a really positive experience for me. And then finally, the students. I started to meet with the students in October, and the way I handled meeting them was I spent time meeting with each 6th, 7th, and 8th grade advisory. And that's been a wonderful opportunity because I've had a chance to introduce myself to them, and they've been able to introduce themselves to me. And I've heard their questions, excuse me. I've heard their questions, and it's been really exciting because whenever I walk through the building, kids are starting to call me Mrs. Crowley and say hello, so I feel like I'm building those relationships. And the reason I'm doing all of this, the reason I'm spending time meeting with parents and staff and students is that when we open the doors in September, I not only want to hit the ground running, but I want to hit the ground knowing. I really want our school to be a positive, a positive place so that we can start learning on day one. And, okay. So now I'll talk a little bit about the Old Lincoln School. As you know, the Old Lincoln School is under renovation, and I'll just share some highlights that we're really excited about. So we're going to have two new science labs. These will be dedicated for grades 7 and 8 because the 7th and 8th grade curricula really require a robust lab. We are also going to reclaim the auditorium, as I have shared before, because I think it's really important for the middle school grades to have a thriving, performing, and dramatic arts program. We are also going to completely gut and renovate all the restrooms. And I have a cute little story. When I was visiting with one of the 6th grade advisories, I was sharing with them some of the highlights of the renovations. And when I got to the point and I told them that we were going to have a new, that they were going to have new restrooms, they actually started clapping. They were like, "New bathrooms, that's fantastic." And in my head, I was thinking, "How bad are the bathrooms here?" So I had to go look after that meeting. And in any event, it was very sweet. And then I met with a 7th grade advisory, and I shared the same information with them. And one of the girls, she was just so very sweet. You know, she interrupted me appropriately, and she leaned over to all her 7th grade peers, and she said, "Oh, you guys, if they have new bathrooms, let's keep them clean, okay? Let's take care of them, so we actually want to go into them." And I said, "I really like working with these group of kids. This is very, very good." We're also going to have, many of the classrooms will have hardwood floors, and they are going to be sanded and refinished. In fact, I was attending the weekly building meeting on Tuesday. And they are putting together one of the rooms to use as a prototype with the floors and the painting before we move on to all the other rooms. And with the new floors and the painting and the natural light that each classroom has, that every classroom has in the Old Lincoln School, it's really going to be quite a beautiful space for teaching and learning. So I'm really excited about that. Everything will be freshly painted, we have lockers ready to go. So, you know, I think we're going to be in really good order. And my hope is that sometime this spring, based on the construction timeline, I really want to be able to host an afternoon or an outing with staff, families, and children before they go home for the summer vacation. Because I think it's really important that kids, especially the children, but children and their parents can put a visual with their future so that they have a lot less anxiety over the summertime. When they come in September, I don't want that to be the first time that they're walking into the school. So that's the hopes related to the building and the renovations. So now, I just want to take a little time to talk about the most important part of our school, which is going to be the actual teaching and learning that happens every day. And an important part of this is something that has been addressed already this evening. So from the district level to every school, the public schools of Brookline has communicated a very clear strategic plan. I would like to share certain words and phrases that have helped me shape my vision for Devotion at Old Lincoln School. So if you think about the strategic plan, we know that there's a 10-year vision. And some of the words and phrases that resonate with me are "dynamic," "collaborative," "equitable," "engaged with the community," "contributing to the world," "an extraordinary education for every child." And then you come down to the mission. Every student develops skills and knowledge to pursue a productive and fulfilling life. Down to the four important goals. Every student achieving, every student invested in learning, every student ready for change and challenge, every educator growing professionally. And then you come down to the already noted, newly revised Devotion Elementary School Education Program. And one of the quotes that I would like to take from Dr. Fisher-Mueller is, "In the year 2014, our vision challenges us to shift the traditional paradigm of school to a new definition of 21st century pre-K education. Our strategic plan, specifically the four goals, serve as our guide as we challenge ourselves to fully prepare children for their future in an extraordinary time." And that really is the path. That is the guide for us at the Old Lincoln School. So based on the very clear path laid out by Brookline, this is what some of the important pieces of teaching and learning will include at the Old Lincoln School. Now, these are not just my important pieces. I've been talking to everybody and talking to staff and coordinators and Dr. Lupini and Dr. Fisher-Mueller. I want to continue this thinking with the staff, and I will be doing that in the second half of the year. So we really have a shared vision of teaching and learning at the Old Lincoln School. But these are, these are some of the important pieces right now. Targeted individualized instruction for all students with increased autonomy, for students to own their own learning. And you notice I've italicized that because that's really the important part. Increased use of data to inform instruction. Application of knowledge to real-world projects and problems. Active engagement, which leads to investment in learning. And the idea of being a producer and publishing for authentic audiences. And if you think about the five of those, it's the bottom four. Data to inform, application of knowledge, active engagement, and authentic audiences that then tie back to how every student can own his or her own learning. And that's really the goal of our school and of educating children. Because once they leave us, we want them to keep learning. That's the point. So what do these mean for the actual day-to-day life of Old Lincoln School? So some of the things I'm thinking about is really using project-based learning as a primary teaching and learning model. An increase of online learning to create a blending learning community, not just focusing fully on technology, but blending that learning. So students have a balance of both. Creating a flexible schedule that allows for deeper learning with longer blocks, fewer transitions, which is better for children. Blocks for learning extensions, learning interventions, and if possible, clubs and activities. Integration of specials with core classes. For example, integrating health with advisory to really focus on the commonalities between the advisory program, the health curriculum, and Olveus. With a real focus on the wellness of the child, both in school and out of school. Almost having the child understand the balance between mind and spirit and body. Another area of connection or integration would be art in the core subjects. Having the educators co-design lessons and units so those types of classes become integrated. I think of this as trying to create cylindrical circles of overlap and transfer as opposed to isolated silos. Because in my opinion, too many kids still kind of go into math, and they act as their math student. Then they come out, and they go into English, and they're an English student. And there really needs to be more transfer of behaviors and ways to engage in those classes that overlap through all the classes that they attend. So those are some of the impacts of these various teaching and learning focuses. Then, we have professional development because this is how this can all get done and done well. So I just wanted to share with you a little bit of the professional development that I've been engaged in and that I have started with the Devotion Middle School faculty. So I was very fortunate to be awarded a BEF grant with Rick Rogers, and he and I spent a week at Harvard University participating in the Leadership and Evolving Vision Seminar, where we were with administrators from across the country and around the world. And that was a very empowering week for me. I not only learned a lot, but I realized that if I had any doubts about being a principal, I didn't anymore. I knew I was in the right place. I may not have been as experienced as other people, but I felt really comfortable being there. And I was really thrilled that everything I heard and I spoke to Rick about, that I thought about, "How can I bring this back to Old Lincoln School?" So that was a wonderful week. Then a few weeks later, I went to the Building Learning Communities, another great opportunity offered by Brookline Public Schools and the BEF, and Amy Martin here in Central Office. That's led by Alan November, all about using technology to enhance our teaching and learning. Not to use technology for the sake of the tool, but to use the tool to fine-tune our pedagogies and how we teach children. As was mentioned by Carrie earlier, I was able to attend a workshop at High Tech High School's complex in San Diego in October. I went with Scott Moore, the Director of Technology and Libraries, and two of the teachers at Devotion, middle school teachers. And that was an incredible experience to be there because they focused primarily on problem and project-based learning. So we were able to take a lot of that and bring it back to the other Devotion staff. And then I just participated in a four-day Expeditionary Learning National Conference here in Boston, again with another Devotion staff, a 7th grade teacher. And actually saw the chairwoman over there at the conference, and that was wonderful. So all of these experiences have really helped shape what we want to do at the Old Lincoln School. I've also been working with the Devotion staff every month. I will continue to do so. We're going to be planning a staff, a special staff planning day to try to figure out and fine-tune our shared vision and try to start working on our schedule. I'm excited about a possible attendance at the Buck Institute here in Brookline with a couple of the Devotion teachers, where we will engage in deep learning about project-based learning. And then next year, as we're already up and running at the Old Lincoln School, a lot of this will be happening again because I want to then visit with the current, next year's 4th, 5th, and 6th graders and work with the 5th and 6th grade teachers who will then be at our school the following year. And certainly, second to last, but not least, are the Devotion students. That's what we do every day, and that's why we come. So after meeting with the kids at their advisories, I went back a couple of weeks later, and I said, "I have to do this presentation to the school committee, and I've never done this before, and I really think it's important that I include your voice. Would anybody be willing to share with me what you're excited about for the new school?" And I had about 20 kids that wanted to do this, but I said I could only fit six on the screen. So I took about nine pictures, but these are the six that worked out there so you can see these kids. I literally gave them this whiteboard, and I just asked them to write down, "What are you excited about?" And one, this girl on the left says, "I'm excited for new science labs." And of course, they're excited for better school lunches. I'm not too sure why they think they're going to be better, but there's always hope, you know? Yeah, that's what I said, "I hope." And all I had to do was mention that we were going to have food prepared at Brookline High and then transferred over, and they're like, "Brookline High, that's great. You have a great reputation." They're excited. The young boy on the right was very excited for a new auditorium because he said he wants to get involved in some of the plays. This boy in the bottom left was excited because he said he'll be closer to school. He can now walk to school, so he's thrilled about that. And the young man in the center bottom was wonderful. He goes, "I'm excited for a new experience." I'm like, "That's great, but what do you mean? Like, what experience?" He said, "Well, you know what? To be honest with you, I just, I want new four walls. I want a new building." He goes, "I'm going to be in 8th grade next year." He goes, "I'm ready for something now." I said, "Okay, you can write that down." And then again, here we have the new bathrooms. You know, they had to put that out there, so that was great. And then finally, is the Devotion staff. And I've really come to admire, respect the Devotion staff. They, I'll be honest, at first, many of them were a little anxious and unsure if they wanted to move over to the Old Lincoln School. But after I've met with them, and we've had a fair amount of time to reflect and talk and brainstorm about how we can make Devotion even better than what it is now, they're all on board, and I'm excited to work with them. So they put together a little video for me to include in this presentation. So here we go. This is some of the 8th grade team at the Devotion Elementary School. Hopefully, this will work.
I'm excited about going.
I'm excited about longer blocks.
Longer blocks.
We're excited to work with Monica.
I didn't ask them to say that.
I'm excited to work in a new space.
And I'm looking forward to coming back and working in a rebuilt Devotion school.
We're looking forward to taking a fresh look at our middle school practices. For example,
Project-based learning.
Some interdisciplinary opportunities with our team.
A new schedule.
While maintaining the strong sense of our Devotion community.
There you go. So, let me just move here. So in closing, I just want to share, you know, the facility challenges that Brookline is facing is very difficult. But, you know, I always try to see the bright side. And it really has provided us with an opportunity, excuse me, to look more closely at our practices and determine research-based models that will enhance teaching and learning for staff and students. My hope is that these practices will help us shift the traditional paradigm of school to a new definition of 21st century learning that can be a model and brought back to not only the new K-8 Devotion School, but all of the Brookline schools. So, thank you. And I guess we're ready for questions, if there are any.
Thank you so much. Questions, Ms. Crowley? Dr. Jackson?
Hi. It's great to see you here. I was remembering when we first got introduced to you. And I feel like you have, to your point about being certain about becoming the principal, your posture when we met you was, I think, and now you are. And it's really exciting to just see your journey, and I appreciate you sharing it with us. I also want to say that as a fairly new school committee member, one of the things that the people I spoke to as I was running for office kept speaking to me about was the middle school experience in Brookline. And what is lacking, and what is needed for improvement, and also what works really well that needs to be enhanced. And as I was listening to this presentation, and I've met many parents who have said to me, "I want my, this is like, wait a minute. I, you know, I want to go." And I think, which is commendable, and I think also a real opportunity to your last points for us to learn as much as we possibly can from this experience and take it as a moment in time to look carefully at middle school education for us in a K-8 system, and how to enhance it, the way that you're looking at enhancing it, what makes that work, and how do we really make that part of our practice and sort of fundamental value across the system? So I'm excited to learn as you learn. So thank you so much for sharing all of this with us.
A little dry mouth at the beginning.
Mr. Last.
I think it was a terrific, a very thoughtful presentation, but also terrific in terms of the way you've tried to incorporate everybody into this planning. It's not like you're planning it and putting it on them, but it sounds like you're incorporating people throughout, students also, and then it'll have returns, I'm sure. I had one question. What is the Buck Institute, and why is it here in Brookline?
So the Buck Institute, and Dr. Fisher-Mueller might be able to help me out, is it's the Buck Institute for Education, and they are an organization that has been involved in problem and project-based learning for many, many years. So do you want to add a little bit more, or?
Just simply say that there's a wealth of research on the value of project-based learning, and the Buck Institute is named repeatedly as the experts to provide that professional learning for adults to bring project-based learning to it, as well as expeditionary learning. Those are really the two, the two highlights. And I want to be sure to thank the Brookline Education Foundation for their support and their funding in relationship to actually another gift, another grant from the BEF also. So it's nice dovetailing here of a few initiatives.
So they will be coming here to Brookline?
Yes, and there are details to be worked out and conversations to be had with principals and coordinators, and, yeah.
Dr. Fisher-Mueller, can you just clarify what is expeditionary learning, in case?
Expeditionary learning. I should ask the chairwoman to define that best as a...
So EL has been, so the caveat is that EL has been a client of Bridgebands for my company, my employer, for probably more than a decade. We've done a number of projects with them. And I'm on one of their board committees, their strategy committee. So I'm a huge fan of them. I think it's, what it is, is it was originally part of the Outward Bound nonprofit, and they spun out to focus on bringing outward-bound-type principals to public education. So a bunch of educators who really thought a lot about leadership, character development. They have a lot of models around crew, meaning how do you create community environments. They were selected as one of the three preferred providers for literacy for New York State, along with, I think, Pearson and Scholastic. So, I mean, they were the only nonprofit. They went from, you know, zero to 150 overnight by vaulting into that category. But they're really an extraordinary organization, and their principals and their tenants are really around. They've been doing social-emotional learning before. There was something called social-emotional learning, whole-child, whole-classroom, character leadership, sorts of things. And they've, they're, all of their practices are now aligned to the common core. And so they've taken this amazing set of things and done that. I mean, I think the other thing about EL and High Tech High in particular is that those two organizations are considered, you know, the best in the country. They're getting large-scale investments from philanthropies. They're getting large-scale contracts from states who are trying to align to the common core, but do it in sort of a deeper-learning way. And so it's just, it's terrific that we are, not surprisingly, taking advantage of some of the best organizations in the country on project-based learning.
Because we are crew, not passenger.
Yes. Crew, not passengers. If anybody wants to know about this, I have a lot of material.
Ms. Cox.
I would have done this on my own, but Carrie Goldberg came and did it for me. But to thank you so much for the engagement that you've done with the Devotion parents who, from the very beginning, knowing, approaching the renovation, approaching the thought of going to a new building, certain grades being separated, have had a lot of anxiety and concerns. And very early on, you were in the building, talking with parents, answering questions, setting up office hours, establishing a webpage. It's, you've been tremendously accessible, and I know that it's been very comforting to a lot of parents to have that opportunity to talk with you. So I really want to express my appreciation. And speaking of which, I think one of the greatest challenges is moving away from a neighborhood school for a lot of families. Even though we know this is going to be temporary, but for our kids, it's not so temporary. And it's an adjustment some of us make when our children go to the high school. We're doing it, we're going to do it a little bit earlier here. And one of the things that you mentioned was the importance of engagement with community. And you've done a really beautiful job of it at Devotion. I'm wondering if you're having some thoughts and strategies about how to continue that engagement in this distant location, which is going to be a lot harder for families to access. They won't be in the building probably as much as they can be at Devotion.
Sure, so I have been thinking about different vehicles of communication, and, you know, some are already structured that I will continue. For example, you know, the principal sends his letter out through the PTO website every week. I will continue to have, you know, something like a parent coffee. But another piece that will tie in beautifully with the project and problem-based learning is, you know, I'm thinking in my head of different ways of how to incorporate project-based learning, although the teachers will not have a lot of experience with it yet. So I'm not sure that we can incorporate it on a day-to-day basis. So I'm trying to think, there are various models, like 35-3 or 43, where you teach for 40 days, 35, 40 days, and you coordinate all your units across disciplines. And then you stop the school for like three days, and you engage in project or problem-based learning, every adult and every student in the building. And on completion of those project-based exhibitions, you know, all the High Tech High or Expeditionary Learning. And I would love to have a number of those exhibitions over the course of the year to invite the families in, to invite grandparents in and other community members to see what we're doing at the school. So I'm trying to think of like new opportunities of getting parents into the building because one of the negatives of a traditional middle school, after working there for, I don't know, 18 years, is that it's very hard for parents to come into the school. And we certainly don't want that to happen because that's not what they're used to here in Brookline. So I'm very cognizant of that, and I'm trying to think of ways to make sure that parents can come in, starting with that visit in the spring. So that's really in the forefront of my mind. Because in all of this, too, I'm Monica, Mrs. Crowley, the principal, but I'm also Monica, mom, and I have two children. And I understand what it means to want your children to be happy every single day. And that's really what I'm thinking about all the time.
I think middle school's a really interesting time to do that, too, because it's really the transitional time between when parents are guiding their kids into the building and being very heavily involved, to the high school,
and being very heavily involved to the high school where we're much more allowing our kids to be independent and middle school being sort of the linchpin between those and, you know, helping to make that transition both for the kids and for the parents. And I'm glad that you're giving some thought to that.
On the link that I have on the devotion PTO website, I quote developmental designs, which is the social emotional curriculum program that we use for advisory. And one of the things that they say is that, you know, middle school students so desperately want their independence, right? And you have to figure out how to give them that independence, but they so need adult support still. They don't think they do, but they need it. You know, they're going over that bridge and they fall back over the bridge. So, you know, it's really important that we keep those developmental needs in our mind as well.
Mr. Pollack?
I'm curious about something in year one. I'm, you know, sort of, obviously there's a big challenge of the whole transition and rolling out a new program and a new school and everything. Year two, you'll have a full house, but year one, you'll also have a half-full house. And I'm just, I imagine that you've kind of thought about that a little bit, about what it's like to be half-full and how you'll, you know, sort of take advantage of all that extra room and how also you'll make the community feel, you know, held well with the kind of knockabout aspect of that.
Sure. So, I mean, the first year is going to be intimate, smaller, but we also will have the luxury of a full complement of a staff, but not the full complement of a student body. So that means the adults can do more in that first year. So one of the things I'd like to share is when I first was so graciously offered a spot at Brookline High as a temporary office and Deb introduced me to the Brookline, the high school staff, I can't tell you how many of the staff members came up to me one-on-one and said, "Let me tell you a story about the old Lincoln School." And they were talking about when it was a freshman, yeah, when it was a freshman campus and many of the current staff at the high school said to me, "You know, Monica, when we were told we had to go there, nobody wanted to go. We were complaining the whole way. And then we got there and it was a small, intimate, wonderful community. It was the best years of our life. In fact, it was so great, we didn't want to go back to Brookline High School." So, and they told me, and I asked them why, and they said, "Because there was more time for the adults to talk to the children. There are more opportunities to engage with the children, to have those face-to-face conversations, Mr. Young, like you mentioned, you know, that relationship building." So I think, because of the size, I think that's a benefit and that will prepare us and get us ready for when our younger students come the following year.
Ms. Scott?
You know, it's interesting how the past comes back. Earlier, earlier this week, I ran into a woman who was an administrator in Brookline for many years, Louise Thompson. Some of you may have met Louise. And what Louise talked about and what influenced, I think, many of us who taught in Brookline was how you create a culture and how you create a community. And I think that that, those things that she said certainly stuck with me as I worked in a classroom and looked at creating a classroom community. And I certainly know they were very, very important when I was at Driscoll School. That was the way we operated. We thought about culture, we thought about community and how you convey that. And it is such a pleasure to sit here and listen to what you are saying because you are doing exactly what she said in the early eighties. And here we are, it's 2014, lo these many years later, 2015, I'm sorry.
It just started.
It did just start. But this many years later, the kinds of things that we learned then are still exceedingly important. If you want any kind of group to work well, you have to think about culture, you have to think about community. And you are absolutely doing all of these things that make people already feel there's a culture and community around the old Lincoln, devotion at the old Lincoln School. So all I can say is keep doing what you're doing. It's spot-on and thank you for really devoting the time and the effort and the thought to making devotion at Old Lincoln a really wonderful place for the children who will be fortunate enough to go there.
All right.
Yeah, Dr. Fisher-Mueller.
Thank you so much.
Are we allowed to ask a question before Ms. Crowley sits down?
Not, it's not typically the practice, so.
I just want to be sure to make the point that it has been our intention from the beginning to actually use this challenge as an opportunity, not only the opportunity for the devotion school, but the opportunity for our school system. And with that point, folks have to understand that the word nimble was used earlier. We will not have the ability to generalize these practices in our other schools in the absence of a hardy override that gives us the teachers that we need and the materials and supplies that we need and the structures that we need such that we can bring these practices back and students can have the experience and other folks will be as excited. And I just want to be sure that everybody, as excited as they are about devotion, please understand that that is a form of support for the entire system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowley. Excellent job.
All right, on to our next agenda item, the coordinated program review.
So Dr. Schmuckler is here this evening to share with you a progress report on the coordinated program review, which we recently went through that process. She will focus particularly on a few of the areas. And the primary focus here this evening will be on the accomplishments that were noted in that report as well as areas of recommendation, some of which we've already discussed here, but really some key pieces around specific recommendations and the way we're going about addressing those recommendations. And I want to thank you. I also want to mention while you're, while we're on this topic, the work of Amy Martin in particular in coordinated program review, but really Karen Schmuckler has just done an amazing job, both in this area, in making sure our programs are compliant, but more important than compliance, than making sure that our programs well-serve our students and families. So, Dr. Schmuckler.
Good evening, good evening. So I hope it'll be as uplifting as that marvelous presentation on all the exciting happenings at Old Lincoln. So coordinated program review happens every six years for all districts with a three-year mid-cycle review. So the Department of Education does a full review and then comes back at the midway point. And the department was here in April, although the actual review, districts do their own self-assessment a year before the department comes. So it's a years' process before they get here with their visit. Okay. Let's try that. Robin, do you know why this is not?
Just to glance at here then.
Yeah, it's not.
Oh, the top, there's one.
Hmm. Sorry for the click. Now that the click, I think it's frozen. So let me, I will, okay, I will continue to, so our program, coordinated program review looks at four different areas. And this year in Brookline, they looked at special ed, they looked at civil rights, they looked at our English learner education program, and they looked at our vocational and technical educational program. And actually, can I? Yeah, let me, I'll work from the... Excellent. So what coordinated program review is about is it is the Department of Education's accountability system for districts that really looks at local compliance with education requirements. In many areas, it is a, they look at procedure, they look at process and procedure, as Bill noted, about compliance, but they also look at quality and effectiveness and learning. So that through districts' abilities to be compliant, that you're also providing excellent instruction for the students. In civil rights particularly, they look at that all students have equal access to all the benefits and all the services and all the programs in the district. And all reviews cover the same areas across the four categories. So as I said, they were here for four days in April and they do different areas. So they look at a review of documentation. So they pull a number of student files in all areas. They look at process and procedure. They look at our handbooks, they look at our codes of conduct, they look at our manuals, they look at our professional development programs, they look at our licensure of staff. So nuts to bolts from what are we doing in our PD department, what are we doing in HR, what are we doing in our schools, what are we doing about access, what are we doing about program development. They also interview both administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, parents and students. We're a relatively large district and so they looked at, they did 20 administrator interviews. They met with 91 teaching and support staff across the schools. They met with three, four parent advisory council members, 13 parents, 15 students, and they met with seven committee members on, for vocational and technical education. Excuse me. In special education, they looked at 49 student records. So prior to them coming, they send us a list of student records and review the records. They looked at 20 English learner education records and they looked at 20 career and vocational technical education records of students in those programs. They also sent out surveys. So they sent out 67 surveys to different students and parents across the district. And then they observed in classrooms. So they were in the district from pre-K through the high school and they did a number, they did all in all 29 instructional visits. So sitting in classrooms, observing in classrooms, and then debriefing with teachers and paraprofessionals and students and parents after visits. They were at Brookline High School, Runcle, Heath, Devotion, Beepe, Lincoln, Pierce and Lawrence. Okay. So these, I'll do my best to sort of talk, this is a summary of our compliance criteria. So this is, the department issues this 100-page report, which really looks at compliance in a very detailed way, in compliance in all the different areas. Thank you, Jennifer. Do you want to do it? Thanks. Okay. So in, across the board, in special education, and these are standard for all schools, there are 65 criterion and indicators that they measure schools by in special education. In civil rights and other general education requirements, they look at 27 indicators. In English learner education, and when our technology works, I will walk you through what the indicators look like. They look at 18 different indicators. And in career and vocational technical education, they look at 39. So when they come in, they're looking at standards, process, procedures and policies across all these various areas. Okay. Where do you want it? Here, I'll let you find it. Okay, thank you. So I'm just going to go back to the CPR components. So these are the areas that in all the things they're looking at, they look at these nine components. Assessment of students, student identification and program placement, parent and community involvement, curriculum and instruction, student support services, faculty, staff and administration. They look at our school facilities, program evaluation, and then record keeping and grant fund use. Okay, these are the different elements and their process when they were here, the schools they visited. And so these are the summary of our compliance criteria. So our last coordinated program review was in 2008. And what you see there are the criteria where we were found to be partially in compliance with criteria between 2008 and 2014. So in special education in 2008, there were 18 criterias that required corrective action and in this past review in 2014, there were three. Civil rights and general education requirements, 2008, we had nine, and in 2014, five. In English learner education, there were 18 in 2008 and five in 2014. And in career and vocational technical education, there were 18 in 2008, 10 in 2014, and one criteria that had a non-implementation. So across the board, some really solid and good improvements between our last CPR and the current one. So this just gives you sort of a taste of the criteria. It doesn't necessarily mean anything, but the way the department looks at is, so SE is special education, and each criteria has a number and what the criterion stands for. So those were the criterias and I'm going to go into detail in all areas in the ones that we have corrective action in. Okay. So one of the areas of, as Bill said, to talk about both the areas we need improvement, but also the areas that the department recognized and acknowledged. So across board, there was, certainly in special education, but in all our areas, dramatic improvement in a CPR that had, out of 65 indicators, only three areas of partial compliance and partial corrective action. They commented and engaged staff across the district, that's regular education and special education staff. Exceptionally hard-working special education teachers who in their observations go above and beyond specialized instruction. So what they spoke about is, you know, special education teachers who are being creative in looking at content and modifying content and really looking at state-of-the-art and innovative practice. They particularly commended the evaluations that are done by our psychologists, our speech and language, our BCBAs, our PTs and OTs and all our other related services staff, as well as that they felt the district had very well-written and comprehensive IEPs. They were impressed with our strong programs for students with autism and for students with social emotional needs. And they were very impressed with their visit to our Beepe program in which they truly felt they saw the, what really are the markers of the way inclusion should be in a public school. So those are the areas of note. And then as their role, which is really to look at districts and to help districts on areas of improvement, these are the areas for improvement. So SE 35 and SE 36 are both on assistive technology. 35 is on the content and 36 is the financing of it. So we were cited on both 35 and 36. And this is the direct citation. What they found across the district was that students cannot consistently access programs that require the use of a computer because many of the desktop computers in the schools are old, do not work and consistently freeze. I tried to paraphrase that, but I just put it in terms of their experience of it. Now again, not everywhere, not all the time, but those were some of their observations as well as in their commentary, some of the feedback that they got from parents in the parent interviews, that this was an area of concern. And then specifically, they cited the adaptive learning center as well in terms of that it wasn't consistent, that they saw, you know, computers freeze when they were there and so that there wasn't the consistent access. It's not that students didn't have access, but there were things that were barriers to access all the time. So as part of corrective action, we submit a report to the, to DEES and we've already submitted our first corrective action report. It was due December the 15th, which really said, "How are we going to correct the, what's our corrective action plan?" And we have a year from their report. So their report was issued to us preliminary in June. Their final report was sent to us in September and we have a year from September 2014 to September 2015 to correct it. Some of the corrective action, we really got the preliminary report, got the results and really worked with the district, with Scott Moore, with Karen King, with the teaching and learning office to really look at, we didn't even know, we had the year to really do some very rapid corrective action in certain areas and particularly around the technology. So by September the 14th, and this was very hard work from our IT department and teaching and learning, all our upper grade learning centers were equipped with Chromebook cards. And that was our phase one. So we have a phased implementation of this corrective action. We're about to get our second, so that's our seventh, eighth learning centers over the next... It's not that students didn't have access, but there were things that were barriers to access all the time. So, as part of corrective action, we submit a report to the, to DEES. And we've already submitted our first corrective action report. It was due December the 15th, which really said, how are we going to correct the, what's our corrective action plan? And we have a year from their report. So, their report was issued to us preliminary in June. Their final report was sent to us in September. And we have a year from September 2014 to September 2015 to correct it. Some of the corrective action, we really got the preliminary report, got the results and really worked with the district, with Scott Moore, with Karen King, with the Teaching and Learning Office to really look at, we didn't, even though we had the year, to really do some very rapid corrective action in certain areas and particularly around the technology. So, by September the 14th, and this was very hard work from our IT department and teaching and learning, all our upper-grade learning centers were equipped with Chromebook cards. And that was our phase one. So, we have a phased implementation of this corrective action. We're about to get our second, so that's our seven, eighth learning centers. Over the next two weeks, our fifth, five and six learning centers will also be getting the next phase of Chromebook cards. And by spring of 2015, so ahead of our September deadline, all our learning centers will have dedicated one-to-one device access. Now, this is not a one-to-one program, but there will be enough devices in a learning center so that all students will have access all the time and consistently. And all the hardware and the software in the ALC has been upgraded as we speak. And new smart boards were upgraded, ordered and have been installed. Areas for improvement in civil rights and other general education requirements. So, some of the areas in this were around our translation into languages other than English. And the corrective action, some of it has already been done. Mindy Paolo has worked very closely with our Office of Student Affairs. We have already revised our home language survey to make sure that we're outreach to parents right at the beginning of their entrance into the school and making sure we know exactly who needs what documents and that they are provided to parents. And she will continue to work on all of that by June the first. Other areas that have, as you'll see, have already been corrected. We have a number of high school students who are employed by outside businesses. And the outside businesses need to sign an assurance that there will be no discrimination in their practices of which students they are willing to hire. And the high school has already corrected that aspect of it. One other area was just on our student handbooks and codes of conduct. And again, that not all of those were translated into all our five primary languages. And that corrective action is in process. Notice to students 16 or over leaving school without a high school diploma. There were some things in our process and in the actual letter that we sent to students that did not follow all the required procedures. And again, the high school worked very closely together with their teams and with Deb and her dean's team. And that aspect has, that both the letter and the process has already been corrected. And then finally, around institutional self-evaluation, was really about our, the district's evaluation of its programs, again, to ensure equal access to all programs, including athletics, extracurricular, regardless of race, color, sex, gender, identity, religion, national origin, English proficiency, sexual orientation, disability or housing status. And what we decided to do with that is really, in terms of the corrective action, is to really make it more of a broad-based district process and procedure. And so, we assembled what we called a District Standards Committee for Access Equity and Inclusion. We all met before the break. It was a very broad-based group of providers from the district across domains and disciplines. We had a student representative, parent representative, community. And the plan for the District Standards Committee is we will meet twice a year in the fall/winter period and before the spring. And all members of the committee will be doing what we've called district audits. And some of these will be choice, members' choice. So, different members have chose to do different things in their particular area and domain. And the data from all the audits will be compiled and reviewed with different action plans as indicated. So, that, and that'll be an iterative dynamic process that the district will continue on a twice basis. So, what are our next steps? As I mentioned, our corrective action plan was sent to DEES by December the 15th. We've got a year to complete all our actions. These are the kind of things we submit in our corrective action plan for each one across the various areas. And as Bill mentioned, it, the CPR is an enormous amount of work that involves people across all levels of the district. So, I want to thank our, you know, our ETFs in all our schools, which really look every day, do the work of making sure not only that we're compliant, but that we provide excellent services to our students, our teachers, our administrators and support staff, particularly in, certainly out of my office, out of the Office of Student Affairs, Linda Kirby did a yeoman's job of organizing not just student services and the civil rights, but the management and the organization in all the other areas. And those are the names of our special ed directors, Emily Frank, Sarah Olaf, Mark Nachth, and our Director of Guidance and Clinical Services, Christina Palmer. And that's it. Any questions, comments?
Thank you for your attention to all this detail. Questions from the committee? Ms. Chalapski?
Thank you for your report. I know these audits are never easy and the auditors are never happy unless they find something because you have to, otherwise what are you doing? But one thing I was curious about was, how do they determine high-frequency languages? And is it different for each school? Is it different?
It's our high frequen-
Is it district-wide?
It's our district, it's our designated high-frequency language district based on our SIMS data that we submit to DEES.
So, therefore, if we have 20 or more kids, it's considered high-frequency? If we have 50 or more kids, it's considered, what, where's the cutoff?
So, I don't know what the DEES cutoff is in a district, but it's our, we have our standard designations that we have in Brookline. I don't know, Jennifer, if you know.
Four languages?
It's five. It's our five primary languages. So, it's-
I can, I can do it. So, I don't think there is a number. I think that, you know, at least in our case, I can't speak to other districts, they would look at the data that we provided you about a month ago. And it's a pretty easy determination that there are five here. Now, it could be that in the future, there would be another in that range, that there might be six, right? Because we have a couple of languages that are, there was a pretty significant growth in population. So, they'll take our definition of those, of those high-frequency languages, which in our case are five. And then they'll say, you know, in terms of these documents, do you translate to all of these, your key documents? And we haven't, in all cases.
And for, well, so, one of the things I'm thinking about, I mean, because it's a lot of work to translate these things. It's not easy. You know, for instance, I know that our Japanese population tends to be at the elementary school. Would we also, and that's one of the languages, I'm sure, that's included in the five, would we also be required to translate it?
It's an interest-
It's very, in the weeds maybe, but I was just-
So, the, again, it's all the primary important documents of the district. So, it's things like student handbook, codes of conduct. But then it's also documents at the school level on a, so if a parent fills out on their home language surveys that they require documents in order to understand and participate in their children's education, districts are required to do that as well. So, it's having your standard documents in all your languages. But then, on an ongoing basis, ensuring that parents who require documents to be translated so that they can access them, that needs to be happening as well. And that is happening across the district as well, on a daily basis, out of our elementary schools. But it's not every document. It's your key documents and then the documents that are sent out by principals that require it.
But to your point, it's a really good question. I don't believe, in my review of those data, that there are wild enough variations in language X across K through 12 that you would say, "Well, we could translate the handbook of the elementary schools for that language. But look, the number is significantly smaller to the point where that's not one of our, at the high school." I don't, I don't think they vary that wildly that that would occur. So, we're responsible for those documents, whatever those core documents are, across the grade levels. It's a good question.
And in special education, you're required to translate IEPs and notices-
Oh, of course, that, that I'm aware of.
And on going basis as well.
No matter what language it is.
And as well as in, under the LE program as well.
Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Park?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you. I'm very impressed and on two levels. First, that was a very cogent presentation, understandable and really germane. It not, didn't feel dry or anything. All felt like information that was very important to know. And also very reassured and impressed with the work that you and all of the staff are doing and the improvements and just how seriously you address all of these important needs. And so, congratulations and thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Parker.
Thank you so much.
Terrific job, as always.
All right. Is there any new business? Because if not, Dr. Lupini, we are ending more than five minutes early.
I'm noticing, yes.
Which is, I won't call it a New Year's resolution because then it means we're going to break it next session. But we're just going to go ahead and adjourn.
Thank you.